Good evening and welcome to the October 28, 2014 meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck. I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For our television audience, I'd like to present to you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Alan Fraley, Chair of Township.
Good evening, Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening, Mickey Price, South Point Township.
Good evening, Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
Good evening, Joe Carpenter, Trotters Mountain Township.
At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. Our invocation will be delivered by Commissioner Joe Carpenter and the pledge of allegiance by Alan Fraley. Would you please stand?
Would you pray with me? Dear Lord, you have provided us with many blessings and we're so blessed to live in a nation with the freedom and liberty that we have. We thank you for those who went before us that brought us this far. We ask you your blessing upon us as we continue and help us to look to you for guidance and wisdom as we move forward. We ask thy blessing upon those who serve to protect our freedom and liberty and be with them at all times. Now bless us as we meet that we may meet in accordance with your will, for it's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Before I start the pledge, if everyone would take a moment of silence, mark up church, longtime school board member, son, his youngest son Dan passed away sometime earlier this morning, and our thoughts and prayers go out to Mark and his family. If we would just take a few moments of silence before I start the pledge. Thank you. May please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our first item is public hearings. The county commission will take citizen comment on the following issues. One, a proposed schedule, standards, and rules to be used in the 2015 reappraisal of real property. Two, to authorize closing a portion of King David Lane. Three, proposed rope application to be submitted to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. And four, naming of a private easement, Harley Way located off of Cramerton Road. Before we go into public hearing, let me outline the rules of procedure for the hearing. Citizens wishing to make comment will be recognized by the chair and then requested to step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Questions shall be directed to the chair for a response, and the chair shall rule on all points of order during the hearing. At this time, do I have a motion to go into public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? We are now in public hearing. Our first item, the commission will take comment on the proposed schedule, standards, and rules to be used in the 2015 reappraisal of real property. Before we take comment, I will ask Mr. Jimmy Tanner, Tax Collector, to provide a brief overview. Once he has completed his comments, citizen comment will be taken. Mr. Tanner.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. For the reappraisal process, we're doing very well right now. We've made our final run of the reappraisal, finished our field data verification last week, so we're through canvassing the whole county, correcting all the measurements and the listing characteristics of the property. We're beginning our final review stage where we take each neighborhood throughout the county, one by one, and start applying the market data that we've analyzed and applying that back to each one of the properties. You know, everything right now is on track. Staff's doing a very good job of moving through the reappraisal process. We plan to still send the revaluation notices out about mid-February to end of February. We've done a couple of things that's hopefully going to help the taxpayers during this reappraisal process. We've developed an online electronic appeal process that should be really convenient for taxpayers that feel like they have some issues with their value. As we know, we're human. We're trying to do the best job we can. We feel like we're going to do a very good job, but we know we probably will have some issues of the value not being exactly where it may be. What we try to do is help the taxpayer, help us in identifying what that problem is and get it corrected. Through the appeals process, we'll do that. With the electronic appeal process that we've developed, that's, like I say, a convenient way that they can go in and do that. We're going to establish a taxpayer's appeal assistance process where they can come in and we'll actually help them go through the appeal process, help them put together information that they would need to go forward with their appeal. We're going to have some of our staff that's assigned to that. It'll be a non-biased help in getting the taxpayer prepared for their appeals, the ones that do feel like they need to appeal. It really is our benefit to help the taxpayers that feel like they have issues and try to find out what their issues are and get them corrected. So that's what we're going to try to do. It is about the value. We hope that taxpayers will look at these notices and realistically look at what the market value is today. You know, our last value's reflected 2007 value. There's been a lot of changes since then. We just hope that they'll take a realistic look at what today's value is as of January 1, 2015, and then go from there as far as our value being correct or not. But everything's on track. We're going to start meeting with some of the towns very soon and start giving them a good snapshot of what their towns look like, where they can provide some information to us that may help us define and refine these numbers as we go forward. But like I say, these last couple of months we have is where we start putting our market values in place and start tweaking these values and get them to where they really need to be, leading up to the January 1. We have to consider all the market data that comes through December 31st, so it'll take us a month or so to get that analyzed, get the value notices prepared. So we're on track right now. We hope things keep going on the path they're on, so.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Any questions from the Board? Commissioner Carpenter.
It's probably too early to ask, and maybe I don't want to know, but do we have a picture of what the total value in the county's going to be?
Well, we, you know, we have preliminary numbers. They're probably not much different than what anybody would think we are. You know, our last reappraisal was at 2007. That was absolutely at the top of the market. You know, when you look throughout our county, we do have a lot of differences among our county. We've got different areas that have appreciated and depreciated at different levels. So, you know, realistically, we got some areas that's doing very well. We've got some areas that did not fare well during the economic downturn, and they will not recover. You know, that's why we do these reappraisals, to equalize everybody and put them back at what market value is. But, you know, 2015, you know, it may not be as bad as everybody assumes, but I'm not sure it's going to be a bright and wonderful picture on evaluation in general. But hopefully, it's just not as bad as some people would think it's going to be.
Yeah, well, we've-
Was that a good answer?
We've grown accustomed to being able to reduce the tax rate a little bit after the reevaluation, but that don't look like it's going to be-
Yeah, you know, in all honesty, out of the 100 counties in North Carolina, every county's had to go through a reappraisal in this economic downturn. You know, like I say, ours was at, the last one was at 2007. That was at the top. And, you know, you know what's happened in the economy since then, and now it's the game of what areas has got back to the levels of 2007 and what's not. And like I say, we do have some areas in our county that's doing very well, but we've got some areas in the county that's not. And, you know, it'd be interesting. We have preliminary numbers now, but as we review them, numbers change every day. You know, the county as a whole, it might not be significant changes, but where these changes could impact a lot is our jurisdictions where they got their pocket of value, and, you know, changes each day could drastically change their outlook. So we really want to meet with the towns, give them a good idea of what their little snapshot is, and have a good discussion on them of how do they think things are, is what we've put in place, and maybe provide some information to us that might be able to help us tweak values a little bit better in each one of these jurisdictions. You know, we want them to be a partner in the reappraisal, not against us, so we want them to see what we have, give them a chance to give us some input, and then go from there. But, you know, everybody knows right now, the reappraisals is not a good thing. They've not been the last few years as far as the value base, but like I say, it's probably not going to be as drastic as what some people might have thought.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Any other questions from the Board? Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say I appreciate you saying that about the towns and basically bringing them in as a partner in the process. You know, us at the county level, you know, we can, you know, have somebody that goes, the value goes down over here and we can kind of compensate for it somewhere else, and maybe the overall impact is not as large as it would be. But if you have a small town, we have many of them, you know, Cherryville, Bessemer City, Ranlo, Dallas, High Shoals. If their pocket is hit, that could really impact their budget. So I appreciate you, you know, taking a look at that and involving them because they're really the ones that are going to get hit really the hardest, one way or the other, the biggest impact, whether it's, you know, good in their area or bad. So that was encouraging for me to hear. I appreciate you-
Thanks, sir.
-doing that and bringing them on.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any other questions from the Board? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
Thank you.
Are there any citizens wishing to make comment? Okay, thank you, Mr. Tanner. Our next item is a road closure. The commission will take comment to authorize closing a portion of King David Lane. Before we take comment, I'll ask Mr. Chuck Moore, County Attorney, to provide a brief overview. Once he has completed his comment, citizen comment will be taken. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The petitioners have requested to close a right-of-way that's located in the King's Grant subdivision. It's an older subdivision, but this section of the layout of the platte has not been improved, so it's in essence a wooded section dividing two lots in the subdivision. Petitioners have requested that we close the right-of-way and record our action, which would have the effect of ceding title to this right-of-way in equal parts to the adjoining property owners. So the request, the petition's been advertised in accordance with the statutes, and we're here tonight to have any public comment on that request. I don't know if the petitioners are here tonight, but, um, so anyway, we can take public comment, and if you have any questions, we'll try to answer those.
At this time, are there any citizens wishing to make comment? Are there any commission comments or questions? Hearing none. I entertain a motion to close unapproved paper road on a port, to close an unapproved paper road on a portion of King David Lane, Gaston County. Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next item is rope application. The commission will accept comment on a proposed rural operating assistance program application to be submitted to the North Carolina Department of Transportation by the County of Gaston. Before we take comment, I'll ask Ms. Cherie Wilson, Access Transportation Coordinator, to provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizen comment will be taken. Ms. Wilson.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the Department of Health and Human Services Access Transportation to present the FY15 Rural Operating Assistance Program grant, which will be referred to as the ROP grant. The ROP grant is a state-funded transportation grant program administered by the State of North Carolina Department of Transportation, Public Transportation Division. As part of the application process, it is required that the Board of County Commissioners hold a public hearing to provide the opportunity for local input and the governing bodies' approval on the submission of the application. The ROP includes the following programs: Elderly and Disabled Transportation Assistance Program, known as the ADTAP, the Employment Transportation Assistance Program, the EMPL, and the Rural General Public, RGP, program. The total allocation for FY15 is $263,832. The ADTAP and employment funding can be used to provide 100% of the fully allocated cost of the trips and requires no local match. The RGP funds may be used to provide up to 90% of the fully allocated cost of each general public trip. The remaining 10% is a local match and will be provided mostly from user fees. This grant affords transportation services for the Gaston County community that do not have access to the city's transit system, Dallas's patients, and students attending Gaston College Dallas campus. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Any questions? Are there any citizens comment at this time? Hearing none. Are there any questions from the Board? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Cherie, for coming. My question is, this grant, at the end of it, in the long term, is this something we're going to have to end up? You said some of the fees will be paid by rider fees, I guess. Who would cover the other cost of that at the end of the grant? And the other part of that, where would that keep us during the grant as well? I guess we would, the grant would pay for itself when we started, but at the end of the grant, are we on the hook for that, or is it going to be paid for? How, after the grant would be taken care of, or it would expire?
Okay, what we do is, as far as the elderly and disabled transportation and the employment, they provide 100% of those dollars to where we service as much as funds is allocated. As far as the Rural General Public, the local match is about roughly around $12,000. We normally compensate that amount from the user fares. They're pretty much take care of the cost of all those trips provided.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Are there any other questions from the Board? At this time, I entertain a motion to give permission to apply for the North Carolina DOT Rural Operators Assistant Program grant for FY15. Commissioner Brown makes motion. It is seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson. Okay. Item number four is naming of a private easement. The commission will take comment on naming of a private easement. Name private easement Harley Way located off of Cramerton Road. Before we take comment, I'll ask Ms. Sarah Penley, GIS Specialist 3, to provide a brief overview. Once she has completed her comments, citizen comment will be taken. Ms. Penley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Staff was presented with a property owner petition bearing 75% or three out of four of the required signatures from property owners to name a private easement as Harley Way. If we can refer to the Elmo, the property is located generally in the South Point Township off of Cramerton Road. This area was formerly a portion of Cramerton's ETJ, which was relinquished and puts it back into Gaston County's jurisdiction. If the site looks somewhat familiar, the applicant was previously before the Board in July, in which a subdivision variance was approved. As a result of that variance, let me go to sheet two, the point of the variance was to create multiple lots on which the applicant intended to place several multi-single, or several single-family dwellings on those lots, and in that case, it constituted a reason to name the private easement for safety and 911 purposes. In July, the plant, or, excuse me, the planning board voted to recommend approval at their scheduled meeting held in August, and the petition was reviewed by the TRC as well. No comments, questions, or concerns were forwarded by those folks, and in accordance with county policy, property owners were notified of the public hearing and notices were posted. To date, staff has not received any calls for questions, comments, or concerns, and staff supports the naming of the private easement as Harley Way in accordance with our Gaston County ordinance of road, and road naming and addressing. It is not a duplicating road name and would be acceptable for use. And this concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Penley. Are there any questions from citizens that'd like to comment? Hearing none. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve naming of the private easement as Harley Way. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Penley. This concludes the public hearings for tonight. The Board would like to thank each of you for your input. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. We are out of public hearing. Our next item is item A on the business agenda for agenda revisions or approval. Is there anyone wanting to change the agenda or make any revisions? Commissioner Price.
Thank you. I do not necessarily pull it, but I do have a question about item J. I see Mr. Donnie Hicks is here, or the county manager. Could you just tell me what, at the end of the study, what are we getting, what would we be provided in the study when the agreement is done?
If you don't mind, I don't mind pulling it. Just pull it. That way, we can discuss. I'm going to support it, but I think it's a really good idea and something I think would be good for discussion with Donnie.
Okay.
That'll be a good idea for Donnie to come up and tell a little bit about what's going on.
So we'll move item J, just for clarification, to non-consent. Excuse me. It'll be under items pulled from consent agenda. Any other revisions? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with item J being moved to the items pulled under consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting of, the minutes of the regular meeting of September 23, 2014, October 14, 2014, and the minutes of the closed session of October 14, 2014 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 133-31811. Motion made by Commissioner Carpenter, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, are there any citizens wishing to make comment? We have no citizens signed up. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have no items under non-consent. We do have one item that's pulled from the consent agenda, item J. I will give that. Donnie, if you want to go ahead and come forward, if you'll tell us a little bit about that.
Thank you, Chairman Philbeck. I'll make this quick. I need to probably use the Elmo to show you what we're going to do. But in general, we were asked by the City of Cherryville to help them with some land planning efforts to look at the land east of town along NC 150. We've been working on this for probably a decade or more. We did a very, very quick study a couple of years ago. We probably ended up with more questions than we did answers. And so we've gone back and defined three study areas along 150. If you look at the, kind of the Kelly Green Study Area Number One, that's along the area on 115-year Walmart. We studied this a couple of years ago, and again, we didn't really have enough money to come up with a full-blown site plan, but an area that has some development potential, we want to go back and evaluate it. Study Area Two, the red area, is along 150 on both sides. The primary interest there is to see if we could find rail-serve sites. There is a real scarcity of sites in the region, and we're trying to find some locations where we can do some rail-serve projects. And Study Area Three is a much smaller area, but again, trying to focus on, could we find a rail-serve site in that area? You can't simply just go up and look at the property and say, "We think this can be rail-serve." We all intuitively think that it could be. So what we're going to do in this study is we broke each one of those three areas out separately, and we're trying to find out different items for each one of them. So at the end of it, we'll have a site development plan for each area. We'll have a real assessment by STV Ralph Whitehead. Can it be rail-serve, and what would it cost? And we'll end up with not only a site plan, but we're going to take this one a step further where all the sites in there will have grading information on it. So we'll actually be able to show on the site plan how big a building it could hold and how much the grading would cost. You go through a computer program that goes through thousands of iterations, and it comes back and says, "Okay, to balance this site, this is how much dirt you're going to have to move." Then we're going to be able to match it up with a new program called City Engine, and we'll be able to show the buildings on the site, 3D buildings on the site, to show what it would look like. So from our original scope on this study, we've scaled it back a little bit, but I think we've gotten everything that we need to look at. So at the end, we'll have all this information about the sites, and I think it'll do one real important thing. It'll allow us to move forward in trying to find a way to develop these sites with the landowners and the city, or it'll tell us that we can't develop them and we'll move on to some other program.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Mr. Price.
Does the, will the study show or talk about transportation concerns?
It will. One of the concerns we have in that Cherryville area is that we can't just go get a driveway permit anywhere along 150. Since it's a limited access, two-lane road, we also have to match up the road and the ingress and egress with wherever the DOT will allow us to do it. And you say, "Well, that's not that big a deal," but it turns out to be a bigger deal than you would think. So we're going to look at, where can we get access to 150, and how do we move the flow in and out of there? The primary focus will be on 150. We all know that NC 279 needs to be widened from Dallas to Cherryville, but the focus on this one is trying to find that corridor along 150 that can be developed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hicks, thank you for coming. Who currently serves that rail?
CSX.
They have a, I know we had a issue back in the Stanley area with some spurs and stuff. Are we good to go with some of that stuff up there, or is that something they'll be able to look at and see if that'd be part of some things that they may need up there in this study up front, that way we don't have to come back?
Exactly. Yeah, that's a very astute observation. I mean, we can serve it with rail, but do they want to serve it with rail? And a lot of the carriers now are looking for long-haul carry. They're not looking to supply local customers. And so one of the questions that we'll go back and look at is, say, "Okay, if we have And so one of the questions that we'll go back and look at is say, "Okay, if we have customers in these size ranges, would you actually serve it? Even if we can get the rail spur in there, even if we can make the grading plan work, if we had ten cars a month, would you serve it?" And the answer may be no. And so I think what we're trying to do is finally bring this to a point where we know everything we need to allow us to either move forward in some limited fashion, scale back some of these sites, or it'll give us the areas in which we need to work on.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Carpenter.
You know, I think this is wonderful. It's going to be a great opportunity for some industries to locate up there. And one of the main reasons is, last week, about every day, I took my grandson to school over at Page Elementary, and on the way back, I'd come up and go over toward the Reagan Mill. It was just a solid stream of cars coming, very qualified workers up there. And they're leaving Cherryville because Carolina Freight's not there and a lot of textile industry's not there. And it's going to be a great opportunity for some industry to locate there and find some very qualified workers. So I'm supportive of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Any other comments? Commissioner Fraley.
I appreciate your comments, Joe. And other people said they're going to support it. I hope everybody does. And Donnie, I appreciate you being here and talking a little bit about this. And obviously, we're in the early stages, but if this thing does pan out, it could be a great economic engine for our end of the county, and hopefully, it could even be a catalyst to help get one fifty four-laned all the way to three twenty-one. I mean, if the interest picks up and the traffic picks up in that area, and Joe, hopefully, we can work on that a little bit with the MPO and our local elected officials and maybe make this happen one day. I think it would be a very, very big deal for our end of the county. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fraley. Any other questions? Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, I just can echo what Alan said and also point out that in our meetings, the town of Cherryville is extremely excited about the possibility of this. I mean, obviously, they would be, but they were excited and encouraged just the fact that we took time to go out there, meet with them, talk about some ideas that we had. And the fact that the county commission's taking this step to further study this and analyze the possibilities, they're very grateful, as Alan can attest to, but they're very excited that we're out there. So I appreciate you doing this, and I think it's a good thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any other questions? Okay, gentlemen, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Second. An appropriate funds from the financial for professional service agreement with Wolford P LLC to develop a site study for Cherryville. Motion made by Commissioner Fraley, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Our next item is appointments. We'll start with Commissioner Fraley.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Did we pull J? Oh, that was it. Okay. I wasn't even looking at what item was.
Commissioner Fraley? No appointments. Commissioner Brown?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price?
None at this time.
Commissioner Williams?
I've got one, Travel and Tourism Advisory Board, Mr. Alex Mullinax.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Carpenter.
Nice full board appointment. I don't have any.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. I have a couple. I'll make all these in one motion. Linda Smith to the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Jeffrey Myers to Emergency Medical Services Committee, and reappointment of Mr. James Hovis Jr. to the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. Second. Seconded by Commissioner Carpenter. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. We have two full board vacancies. I'll make the motion for that. One is Mike McLeod for the Quality of Natural Resource Committee and Michelle Cook, Quality of Natural Resource Committee. Second. Seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any committee reports? We'll start with Commissioner Fraley.
None, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I attended the Gaston Family Health Service Board of Directors meeting, I'll be real quick on that. The highlight of the meeting, we have a new chairman of that board, and that is Mel Parent, and the vice chairman is Bob Toll from Lincolnon. And we received a very thorough update on Ebola readiness. That'll be all.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just piggyback on what Commissioner Price said. At the hospital, we've had several updates on Ebola, and I just want to let everybody know that your local healthcare system is very prepared for Ebola if it did happen to come into Gaston County. And I just want to talk about the collaboration with the Health Department, Gaston Family Health Service, and EMS, the hospital. These guys have been working hand-in-hand throughout this whole process, and I've been very impressed with all of them. And we had a hospital meeting last night, and they stood up and really bragged on our EMS and the Health Department and really talked about how we hadn't made a lot of strides there. So I want to brag on our guys with that. They've done a really good job on this, and I think we're very prepared. Some other good things going on, the emergency department's coming together, it's making progress, and if you talk to anybody that's had to visit the hospital, you're probably going to have some pretty good reactions. The turnaround times are really good, the wait times are improving, and we're not really where, you know, obviously, we want to be, but there's a lot of progress being made, a lot of good things going on. So we brought in a new director, and a lot of positive things are happening. So I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, it's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. And if you in the public have issues with your wait time, you can call Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Carpenter.
Yeah, I'd like to report that Chairman Philbeck and I met today along with several other community leaders with the new Owens Corning group that's coming into the tech park over at, near the college. And I was so impressed, they are already engaging in this community by donating a very substantial amount to Habitat for Humanity. It's just an indication of the type of people that they are. Heard very good reports from their CEO about how they have addressed safety in their company. They have over fifty thousand people worldwide, and about half of those are in this country. But they've reduced their accident down from about a five percent a few years ago down to point six, I believe it was, percent, and they're not satisfied with that. They're keep working on it. But one of the things I want to point out, this board and previous boards took some heat for our investment in the purchase of that park over there, and the improvements made. So it's been overnight, what about a twenty-year success story, Donnie? And the park is just about filled up with some major industries. It's bringing very good paying jobs. There's only about three sites left, smaller sites left there. Owens Corning plans to expand within the next year or two, and they're already going to be one of the largest manufacturing plants in the county. And I think it's an indication of what can happen up at Cherryville where we just approved the study for that site. And of course, we still have some other sites in the county that we need to prepare for. They would not be here unless it had been for the investment that we as a county had made. And so I want to thank the previous leaders that helped with that and those on this board that continue to support that activity. I've got one other I hope all of you will put on your calendar to attend this regional conference by the Central Island Council of Government. It's going to be December eleventh. It's going to be up at Concord at Embassy Suite. And we've been studying this creative solutions for thriving communities for some time about how we can best invest our limited resources to maximize our outcome. So I hope some of you will, or all if you will, sign up and go to that. You probably have already received a packet like I have about the information. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. I just have a few things. One, I just want to remind the public that early voting is well underway. It will end Saturday, and then next Tuesday, November the fourth, is Election Day. I think Commissioner Keger has brought this subject up several times, but last election, we were last place for voter turnout. And regardless of who you support, I do want to urge the public to go out and support the candidates that best represent you. Also, just want to make a public service announcement. Next, on November the fourth, 2014, Election Night, we're going, Commissioner Williams and John Bailey are sponsoring a event. It's nonpartisan, it's Celebrate Democracy. We're going to have free barbecue, concert. This is a good time to come out from seven till eleven to just meet folks and talk. It is November the fourth at 2014, from seven to eleven, at the New Catawba Ten Building, Ten East Catawba Street, Belmont, North Carolina, two eight zero one two. That is all I have. At this time, county managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I'll be brief. I do have a couple of items I wanted to mention. We have prepared an offer for our proposed animal control facility, and so we're working on that. At this time, all of our department has, for the most part, and a few other people are really absolutely immersed in the peer review process associated with priority-based budgeting. That's going to consume a good deal of their time, but I think it'll be well worth it in the long run. We are also engaged in the final stages of our annual audit, which is coming out very good. I don't think there'll be anything negative to report there whatsoever, so we have good financial practices in place. I'm sure you'll be interested in the fact that we should be able to roll out the paperless solution in the relatively near future. We'll probably initiate that with some level of training for all of us who will be involved possibly as soon as ten days from now. So we're pretty excited about that. And the video equipment to upgrade the systems is certainly on track. And Todd says that it will create the illusion that you're all more photogenic, but we'll see. We'll see. Some of you, I think, are, some of you, I think, are interested in the Gaston County magazine, and we're making slow progress on that. It's a huge job. There's really much more to this than you might think, and so we're, Pam and I are working on it primarily, but it's doable, but it's probably going to take six to eight months before we get that accomplished. And then finally, we're making great progress, I think, on the other end of economic development. We've talked a little bit about industrial recruitment and some of the successes there, as well as in-site development, and I certainly agree that the potential for developing those sites in Cherryville, I've met with the city manager and toured those sites here a few weeks back, and I think that's an extraordinary opportunity for us. But on the other side of economic development, we're doing some things with small and business and existing business that I think are equally important. And that involves both EDC and building inspections. And I commend both those departments on their excellent work in providing more direct assistance to the existing business community to possibly catalyze growth from within and certainly to create more of a one-stop-shop type of atmosphere in Gaston County so that people can go to one location and receive the full array of services and be, you know, have their questions answered and just be able to get through the process more efficiently. So that concludes my report, but I'm really pleased about everything that's going on.
Thank you, Earl. Just a few comments. One, I definitely want to give kudos to Donnie Hicks. He has done a tremendous work with Owens Corning. I don't know yet if we realize the ramifications of what's getting ready to happen here. And normally, when you go to these meetings, Donnie sits in the back, doesn't say a lot, but it says a lot when everyone else says, "We're here because of this guy and the work he's done." Also, just something the board needs to take note of, we've talked for a while about having one-stop-shop when it comes to building inspections and things of that nature. I want to give you an example of how that worked this week. We got an email. I don't know, Earl, did the board get the email about Mark Bullock, or was it just sent to me?
I don't think everybody got it.
Okay. We got an email from an individual, a company that was buying some property. They was getting ready to buy it, realized four days, they had to have the permits and just all this red tape from North Carolina DOT in four days. That's something that Mark, who used to be with EDC, is now with the Inspection Department. He ran all of that, was able to get that between EDC, Inspection Department, four days. And the actual owner sent us an email just really thanking us on how quickly that was able to turn around. And I just think that's a good example of being able to cut through red tape, get things done quicker for businesses, because if we didn't have that in four days, that deal wouldn't have went through. So I just want to give you a good example of that and kudos for that. Okay, county attorneys report?
I don't have a report, Mr. Chairman. Do you have a request for a closed session to discuss the price in terms of a contract to acquire some property at Cramerton Road, landfill, and some personnel matters?
Okay, at this time, do I hear a motion to enter in the closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Personnel Matters in North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, to establish or instruct staff concerning the negotiation of the price in terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property located at Cramerton Road, landfill? Motion made by Commissioner Brown. Seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? We're now in closed session.
...
...
...
...
At this time do I hear a motion to reenter open session. Motion made by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Carpenter, in discussion. All in favor? We are now in open session. To inform the public, we gave an evaluation to the clerk, to the board, and the county manager. Both were superb. Thank you for your service. At this time, there's no action to be taken as a result of the closed session. This concludes our meeting for tonight. Our November the 11th work session has been canceled and rescheduled for Thursday, November the 13th. Our November the 25th regular meeting has also been canceled and rescheduled to Thursday, November the 13th, and will immediately follow our rescheduled work session at 6:00 PM at the Harley B. Gaston Junior Public Forum. I'd like to thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna S. Buff, at 704-866-3196, and share them. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion made by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Fraley, in discussion. All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.